You're watching complete coverage of the August 11th, 2025 Jasper City Council Meeting. Brought to you by the East Texas Banner, keeping you informed on air and online.
Call an order please. Everybody in the seat, get to see everybody here. This is the ready to call the City Council meeting, August 11th, 2025. If you have to say, uh, it is now six o'clock. Call an order, Mr. Holmes, would you please pray that please?
Good job, Father, how we thank you for bringing us another day, another opportunity to come together. Call that this council come together. Let us show respect, let them show respect towards each other's and each other's opinion. Every decision that has to be made, let it be made with a pure hand and a clean heart. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
All right, we need to have a change on the order. If you just not have yet done another day. Oh, the department of courts, okay.
Great. Uh, on the 28th meeting, we was, I had DeMarcus on FaceTime. We got a complaint on that, that complaint was from Billy, our attorney, he did an opinion on that. He's going to go over that opinion here, just so you can know that here in Department of Courts, it's one of our departments. That was my mistake, I thought it could be done that way. I thank the ownership of that. But as you can see, DeMarcus is here, he's on touchscreen, the audience can see and the council can see. Uh, we can take a handbook on stuff, DeMarcus and y'all, that will help, Liz. So, Billy, we do like to.
So, before the, uh, the July 28th meeting, 2025, I wasn't physically present, I had actually zoomed in for the meeting and was observing via Zoom. During that meeting, one of the council members, Marcus Holmes, had participated in the meeting by, somebody brought the phone via FaceTime, and that's how he participated in the meeting. So, the, to be in compliance with zooming into meetings like this, we have to, audio has to be available to everybody in the audience. And he also has to be visible to people in the audience and some council members. Just since it was a FaceTime video, he didn't meet those procedural requirements, therefore he was considered absent. For that meeting, we vote on the council and the council members that he had nominated, or the ordinance rejected, nominated, come down. Um, and additionally, uh, yeah, so I'm just zooming in and doing the right thing. Any questions?
Yes. Can I be referenced?
Just answer that question. Really, well, he may allow Joe, like at our next meeting, he may be allowed to re-nominate his three ring.
So, you said that you made a legal opinion that he needed to be counted, accounted absent for that meeting? And the people that he nominated would not be allowed to be nominated, you made a legal opinion about that? You gave a legal opinion in, in writing? Okay, and so you're saying that for that entire meeting, he's considered absent?
For that vote, his vote will be counted absent, yes.
Okay, all right, well, I would like, if you would, Mr. Moran, to please give me in writing, uh, what legal grounds you're basing your opinion on? And I would also like in writing the legal grounds that you base your opinion to address the JEDCO vote, but not the other agenda item from the July 28th, 2025 meeting that Councilman Holmes also participated in. I don't see that added here, um, to our agenda, only to address the JEDCO issue. So, were both of these he voted in?
The whole meeting is absent, the whole meeting is absent. And all we have to do is to, correct my wrong, is next month's meeting, DeMarcus will put him there where he cannot re-nominate and not re-vote on these three components. Is that a way to do it?
This is a fix, yes, number fix.
So, so the minutes, you're scratching the line up for the minutes? We're not going to approve the minutes because I have some amendments, um, the minutes are not correct.
And we'll re-vote on it the next council. Minutes and DeMarcus will be able to nominate his three board members.
Are we not hearing number seven on the agenda considered for approval, discussed, and remain JEDCO board members? Can I say something? Can we do a call meeting? Would it be possible to do a call meeting?
I can do a call meeting anytime, it's to council member or mayor, I'll just call him. But the very next meeting is when we're going to put it on the agenda, if y'all want to do that, call me.
Yes, we can call a special call meeting at any time. And I understand what you're saying, but if the legal opinion is that we're going to base that DeMarcus is absent, then he has to be absent from both of those. And though only one of the agenda items addressed where he was absent.
How do you put that on the agenda?
Who put this on the agenda?
I do, because I thought we were going to be drawing it, time we need to, this will, this will be committed, this is.
Yes, I would like your ruling in what you're basing your legal grounds on, your opinion, and also, like I said, um, and have you discussed this legal opinion with any other council member before tonight, or the mayor?
We just got it today.
So, if I could just ask, just to be sure, Liz, you're saying that we're not going to vote to approve the minutes from July 28th, 2025? Because there are mistakes on those minutes. I do think we need to discuss this, I mean, I understand you want to scratch it from the agenda, but we're discussing it right now and we're hearing the legal opinion, so I, I feel like we need to discuss this.
Well, there's nothing to discuss until you change the minutes.
Well, I feel there are things to discuss about this, I, I feel there is things to discuss about this. It's not just the minutes, we held a meeting, we had a legal quorum present. And so I feel like the actions that were taken and the things that have happened since then and the new board not meeting, I feel that council needs to discuss. What are we going to discuss?
The point has already been made, that Mr. Moran, the legal opinion that said, Mr. Holmes was to be considered absent. And we've got to change the meeting, meeting minutes.
We, well, here's what we discussed, the city council, as far as I'm aware, cannot rescind their vote. Their vote cannot be counted void by anyone but the city council, or a judge, or the people of Jasper. And we did have a legal quorum and we did make a legal vote.
Everything's legal, everything's legal, you had a quorum. Quorum held, everyone had this, DeMarcus is three, uh, board members who nominate, the only thing that can't be, can't be done, you have to do it to next week or special. Everything else is legal. Y'all had a full quorum, DeMarcus come in, you just, so everything's legal.
Because there is some question, because the new board has not met, because there was questions about this vote. I heard the air condition wasn't working, and that's why they weren't able to meet. If they're not able to meet at the JEDCO building because of the air condition, Mr. Kelly, would they be able to meet here inside of City Hall?
Yes.
So, they're more than welcome to do that.
All right, for specifically, the legal opinion, DeMarcus' vote, we're agreeing for those issues. So, if anybody has any questions about the legal, I'm happy to answer them.
For, if I could just be recognized. For us to discuss this and the legal opinion and not discuss the meeting, I don't think it's fair to the council and what happened. You're saying this is what your legal opinion is and this is what your decision is, but we're not discussing anything else? Or hearing how Mr. Holmes feels about this, that his, his members were not counted? Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Holmes, did you have anything that you would like to add?
So, are we going to do an amendment now?
There was a scratch it from the agenda. We're going to have a.
Do we stretch an amendment without a due to your duty?
Yes, and they said that they would, they would schedule a meeting for you to be able to appoint the people that you wanted to appoint. But we could call a special call meeting at any time.
I'm, I'm, I'm fine, as long as, as long as we're not, we're not going to discuss it, without, without things being right, I'm, I'm, I'm fine. And we're going, we're going to go forward with it, yes.
Well, DeMarcus, you understand why that happened because of the video feed?
I, I understand, but, but my thing was to be this way here. If we, if we're going to, if we're going to board my vote on one thing, we should have been boarding my vote on two things. If we took one thing over, that, that, that don't work.
I agree. All right, there were two items on that agenda, not just one.
I believe all of his votes would be counted, it's that simple.
It is that simple, but that's the only thing that we're discussing is JEDCO.
And that's his vote will be counted down to the entirety. And his votes will be counted absolutely entirety. Just that one issue. And DeMarcus.
Mr. Moran. Yes, and, and also, why that, that item wasn't, wasn't considered that you needed an opinion about it? Because there were two items on that agenda, not just one. I definitely will, Mr. Moran, I'm feeling animosity from you, are you upset with me?
Mouse, do you?
Yes.
DeMarcus, I give you my, can you hear me?
I got you.
Okay, I'm going to give you my assurances, you're going to get your three picks back on the board, okay? Does that make sense? You, you're going to get those, okay, we're just going to make it right.
So, we, we, we're stretching amendment seven without a due to your duty.
Yeah, and from what I understand, item seven has nothing to do with, with the video feed issue, which has now invalidated your votes for the whole meeting. But to be fair, to be right, to you and to your people, then we're going to have a, a meeting where you get to nominate. The same three or any three you choose? Okay?
I agree with me.
Okay, good.
If I could just say one thing. Uh, DeMarcus, I'd like to call a special call meeting for Friday, um, August the 15th at 6:00 PM. Uh, so that your, your, your picks can be appointed to JEDCO, would you be okay with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Will you be in town? Will he be in town? Are you going to be here?
I will not be back until the end of August.
Is a annual discussion on this house? All right, we need to move back up to, uh,
Did you say August?
Oh, yes, public comments, we got all about that, public comments.
This program strives to provide personalized support to each survivor based on their recovery goals and needs. This is an achievement by pairing up each survivor who applies to the program with disaster case managers, who will walk alongside them and advocate, and advocate for their personal recovery plan to include goals to rebuild their lives post-sen. The survivors, disaster case manager will also encourage, advocate, and provide resources to local programs that can assist in the meeting the survivors' recovery goals. Um, thank you for giving me this opportunity to share about our disaster case management program here at Disaster Services Corporation, St. Vincent's Day Hall. And in the back, I have pamphlets, um, there's a QR code and there's a phone number where you can contact us. Uh, we do screening and we'll let you know if we can provide you resources. Um, and we're a partnership company through FEMA. Um, so most of the people that go through FEMA that refer to us, and we build recovery plans um, to get you back, or in some way close to, now I'm here to let you know, we can't provide you anything, but we are here to advocate for you, to get you back to what you are used to be normally, okay? All the services provided during this program are free of charge and confidential. To enroll, you can call 1-844-824798. Like I told you, I have a flyer with a QR code, and you can contact us, they will. Thank you.
Jessica Larkin?
Hi, my name is Jessica Larkin, I've only been in Jasper since about 2019, but I knew from the first time that I came here that this is where I wanted to put down roots. I, by the grace of God, clear as day, see my future here in this country. We as a community unfortunately have developed way too many people talking down about this town and war, making sense of this town being more tiring than the community. I get to see this in my day-to-day interactions with the amazing people of this town. I've poured my heart and soul into a business that allows me to get to know the people of this community in a way that few people did honor it do. JEDCO is just one of the myriad things that has been taken on, the overwhelming negative narrative from personal vendettas and agendas that few people truly understand. The amount of misinformation and personal vendettas that are plaguing our news cities and social media outlets that are trying to harm many working bodies of this town is overwhelming and crazy, especially since we are all supposed to be adults. As JEDCO and other working bodies of this community have JEDCO and other working bodies of this community have always done the right thing, showed taste, worked hard, absolutely not, but let the person without sin throw that first stone. Does JEDCO and other working bodies of the, work, to you, or absolutely? But till this council learns to work with the other working bodies of this community, or this community, this will not change. I, along with many others, know that if we as a community and all working bodies in this town can get a Jasper positive board on all working bodies, we, community Jasper, back on track and for, for growth and success. Trust in JEDCO and many other organizations that may result in defunding or dissolving will only cripple this community. When I say Jasper positive boards, I do not mean that everyone's always going to agree. It means that anyone whose job is better Jasper should do just that by choosing Jasper first. We as a community demand that this council act right responsibly to this town and not to their own personal and social vendettas and agendas that affect the community, especially since we're the ones that vote in the office. I can't speak for all small businesses in the town, but I stand for a huge chunk of them when I say that we, small businesses are the backbone of this community. And we are sick of this council acting like children. And all the negative narratives and the man of this council, get back to real business that we can do. We support a new, renewed revamp and refresh JEDCO and know that with a real Jasper positive board, we, small businesses, can start to fit Jasper in its bright light with its amazing people, moving forward with growth and success. And just to make it clear to the negative narratives, I know my business have ever benefited from any money's deals or actions from any state of working bodies. I do not benefit from this at all. I am however, a very active member of this community and many groups and working bodies where I can because I love this community, not for personal benefit. I'm not perfect, nor is anybody else, and please understand, I'm not throwing stones, I'm saying the facts. Like I said before, let the person without stone, without sin throw the first stone. I would wish this community more positive change without the self-serving pettiness.
My name is Michael and what's that, I'm here today to express my support for JEDCO. JEDCO has been driving forthwith in real progress in our community, attracting businesses and creating projects, real investments and real results. These aren't abstract, we can point to real results. This work matters, especially in times when many cities are struggling to stay competitive and retain talent. Is JEDCO perfect? Certainly not. Is this council perfect? Also no. One day, my Sunday school teacher held up the Bible and she pitched roughly the first two pages together, saying, "This is the Bible before Adam and Eve." The point is, once you add people, you have the opportunity for things to go sideways. To this point, unfortunately, we see a small and a very vocal group attempt to discredit JEDCO with misinformation, conspiracy theories, and personal attacks. Let's be clear, disagreement is healthy in a democracy, but disruption without facts, or worse, with distortions around right lies, only undermines the future the rest of us are trying to build. EDCs in Texas are a mechanism for cities to leverage dedicated sales tax to directly invest in projects and initiatives aimed at strengthening the cities by attracting businesses and fostering job creation within their communities. Its mission is to promote, encourage, and enhance job creation and the expansion of the local tax base. Who in their right mind would be against this? We cannot allow the loudest voices in the room to drown out the work of the many who dedicate themselves to smart economic development. JEDCO operates under oversight of measurable goals and a commitment to public accountability. If we care about growing our tax base, supporting small businesses, and even revitalizing neighborhoods, creating opportunities for all of us to thrive here, then we must stand with and for JEDCO. And the board should be comprised of all five business owners and those who support JEDCO and not those who seek to destroy it. Let's not let progress get hijacked by politics or opinions of those whose ideas don't move Jasper forward. Let's focus on what has been shown to actually work, and that is a productive and cohesive JEDCO. Council, the spotlight is on you, and the city is counting on you to follow JEDCO's, JEDCO's bylaws, which clearly state that, quote, "Changes to the JEDCO bylaws must first be drafted and voted on by the JEDCO directors." The council has power here, but it is not absolute. We ask you to follow the letter of the law and return to us with what you take away and render nearly powerless due to the previous council's wonful inaction read by a few JEDCO naysayers. These people still have a voice, but they do not represent the majority, and it's as important now as ever to remember that even the flattest pancake has two sides. I thank you for the opportunity to speak and to be heard.
Okay, now we're going to move number six.
Your packet there, it should have a site plan there, planning the construction of a 30 by 40 garage, uh, on an existing concrete slab that will encroach five foot to the top of the 10 foot. Foot side setback and seven foot, we have required 10 foot setback. They're intending to use the existing slab that was there at one time, but did have structure and life, was torn down many years ago. They have put a lot of time into remodeling that house, I've worked with them for the last two and a half years, practically since I've started with the city, uh, helping them remodel that house. This garage, because it's going to be within five feet of those property lines, it does meet our fire separation distance and it will be constructed with a fire-resistant interior wall, uh, to help with that distance separation. So, we recommend that you do approve this variance. Any questions?
I'm good. I make a motion that we grant the offset, a variance. Second?
Any questions on this? Show hands on the floor. May I pose?
And that's a slightly unrelated question, but it's in your wheelhouse. Jeremy, actually, I gave you some data. Do we see some growth of new businesses coming into Jasper who don't normally drive by and notice? He mentioned that there was some small mom and pop organizations, businesses starting up. Yeah, we see Derek closing, but we don't always see the people that are opening. Do you have any data on that?
Point of order. Point of order. That's not on the agenda for us to discuss, it's to grant a variance. It's not to discuss businesses in Jasper.
Thank you.
Go back up to number one, is the consideration for approval for the seven minutes, noting that July 28th has been removed.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes for the following dates, June 9th and July 14th. A second?
We're going to motion to approve the minute from July, June 8th and July 14th. Is there any discussion on this? No discussion? Show a hand, both please, all in favor? Any opposed? Most passed. Okay, we'll go down to item number two. Consider for approval to Waring Street Construction Contract under the GLO. Uh, MIT grant 24-065-082-E758.
We're going to make a motion for you to discuss it, I'll make it on the first. And this is the MIT, GLO MIT grant we got, one of the super, we originally got the three grants and the one bid and the PD, it did not get all the way through the seven bid, but this one has. We bid it out, the text and material is the low bid on this one. Uh, this is for the section of Highfoot Road and Temple Drive, up by the transfer station, fix that whole intersection, plus a little bit further down. Uh, it's a $738,000 grant, the city's match is $102,000. This is in, uh, just where y'all know the $102,000 is in the preliminary budget, that we brought to y'all at the project workshop. And that's the way we can get $700,000, which the crank for the street work done is $100,000.
Are you in motion?
I make a motion that we approve. A second?
Motion has been made, the second is to consider for approval of Waring Street Construction Contract. Any discretion?
I have a question. Suppose the budget is not passed and we voted to approve this, because the budget hasn't passed.
It's not the last, because, but they want to do it hard on, we have to, we have to do some of this stuff 34 months in advance to be able to get all this money.
But you said you got a grant.
Yes.
You got a grant.
I got a grant, but it helped, we still have a local management experience.
Any other questions? All in favor, show a hand? All opposed? Marcus? I mean, Marcus, did you go that, I'm sorry, I didn't see it. Okay, okay. Marcus, can you, can you hear us, Marcus?
Clear.
Okay, we need you to vote.
Did you go yes or no?
I'm here.
Okay. Number three, the next item? Consider for approval Gulf Coast and Peachtree Highway Coalition and Board.
This is the annual dues to the coalition and we've been paying centralists starting and getting I-14 through this area.
I'll make a motion, we approve this expenditure. A second?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Gulf Coast Peachtree Highway Coalition. Any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor? Show of hands? Any opposed? Consider for approval, recommended bid for the 190 feeters rehab project.
Mayor, council, we have for you to approve with the recommendation by Delta Consulting to award the contract to Texas Elite for the amount of $227,287. The apparent low bidder was, was Ford Mary, but they didn't meet all the legal requirements, we moved them to the second.
Have you dealt with these organizations previously?
No, sir.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Recommend the bid for the rehab project. Do you, any further discussion? All in favor, show of hands, please? Any opposed? We have removed item number seven, we need to talk later. We have council discussion time?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Return to second, all in favor?
This has been full coverage of the Jasper City Council meeting. Brought to you by the East Texas Banner.